Jeff.
Nice.
Hey, Kev. I call this workshop to get to order. Council, you have at your places a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. On the agenda, you also have some listed consent items, and at this time, I then retain a motion to adopt.
In the minutes, Mayor.
In we have minutes, I'm sorry, from two different meetings, one of both on the 22nd of March, a regular workshop and a regular meeting. If I could get that in one motion.
Some of them.
Second.
Any discussion here and not all in favor of six of Bob, I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I know on the consent items, we have these items, the Jacksonville Area Soccer Association lease, and we have some representatives here tonight, but unfortunately, they don't have any additional information to add as far as that's concerned, but that has been approved, the lease.
Yes, just a quick comment. Over the last six months, we've been very fortunate to work with Jamie and with Bob on behalf of JAZA. We have brought two workshops to City Council relative to the new lease. It is a new lease. It's not a continuation of the previous lease. Susan and Michael and other members of the staff have had significant contributions to the lease. We believe it's in the citizens' and in the soccer association's best interest to continue this, and we appreciate the council this evening authorizing this new lease. Bob, any comments, you or Jamie?
We just thank the community for the support for able to keep the area open and provide a service to our community.
Thanks for what y'all do for kids and make that opportunity to perform.
And the new president mayor is here, it's Bob, may I introduce him for the council's benefit?
This is Sam Duran, he's going to be the new president. We're going to switch positions, I'm going to be the VP of Plastic, and Sam stepped up to be the president.
Okay, well, congratulations to both of you. Sounds like different duties, huh?
Yes, sir.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate y'all. All right, so we're going to move right on to our workshop topic for tonight, and that's the 2016-2017 budget review. And Dr. Woodruff, I'll turn it over to you at this time to begin the...
Mayor, members of council, we appreciate the opportunity to begin the budget process. You have the paper copy of the budget, you also have the electronic copy of the budget, so you're welcome to follow along in either format that you would like. As we begin the budget this evening, the capital improvement program, which is this document, was provided to you last month. You've had an opportunity to look at that, and over the next several weeks, we will walk through the operating budgets of the various departments and various funds. As is shown on the screen, by law, you are required to adopt a budget by June 30th, 2016. It has been your practice to hold a series of workshops during the month of April and May as needed, and in a moment, you're going to see the schedule which we propose for this year's budget operation. Now, you're going to see the schedule that we propose for the budget operation. You can see the opening workshop, of course, is tonight, and then each Tuesday through the month of April, we're asking for a budget workshop. We do want to have, although we're required to have it, we also want to have a public hearing for input on the budget. The city clerk has posted the budget as required by law. Carmen, that has been posted where?
It is be advertised in the newspaper tomorrow in a box ad, and it would be, again, advertised the following week.
And for persons who want to actually review the budget, where can they see it?
They can see it online, they at our website, they can see it at the local library, and also in my office.
Okay, that's good. The public hearing is for input. It is not a hearing where you're going to be asked to take any action. We want anyone who feels that they would like to see something added or deleted or input on the budget to feel free to come to your regular city council meeting on April the 19th. We do propose the possibility of being in a position to adopt the budget on May 3rd. As you'll see in a moment, because we're not asking for any tax increases or fee increases this year, we believe that you may be in a position to potentially adopt it May 3rd. If not, you can adopt it at any additional time, as long as it is adopted before June 30th of this year. In the budget message, which is at the beginning of the budget book, there are a couple of comments that I would like to read. First of all, this budget is submitted on behalf of every department and every city employee. This is technically the manager's budget, but the reality is, this is the budget that provides the necessary funds to continue all the services that you, as a mayor and council, have set the standards for us to operate and provide to the citizens. Part of the budget message says the following. "As we present this budget for your consideration, the city management team can confirm that the city of Jacksonville is in sound financial condition. While the city does face financial challenges, these can be managed, and the services of the city government can continue in the quality fashion the mayor and council have directed." "The draft FY '17 budget provides the revenues necessary to continue the delivery of quality services to the citizens of our community relative to water and sewer, the general fund, stormwater, sanitation collection, and miscellaneous accounts. The draft budget does not require an increase in the city's current tax rate of 64.2 cents, nor an increase in the water and sewer fees, the stormwater fees, nor in commercial or residential garbage collection fees. Even so, there are challenges that we're going to face, and we'll be discussing them in the coming weeks. We have challenges relative to the health insurance fund and how we're going to cover the ever-increasing cost of that benefit that you provide to your employees. We have continued expenses for the new Center for Public Safety relative to IT accounts. We always have to watch for the fund balance of the general fund, so we don't draw it down too far. We all know that the tax base of this city is growing, but it is growing at a much slower pace, and we have to begin to take steps to recognize that that tax base increase is going to continue to grow, but at a slow pace. This year, we're talking about new Fair Labor Standard Act charges that determine who is classified as an exempt employee versus non-exempt, basically meaning hourly versus salary. We have to look at the issue of employee compensation, the funding of major equipment, water and sewer debt and bond issues that we'll be issuing later this year. We have to look at the way we're going to fund matching grants for some of our recreation projects, and then, of course, we'll be talking about reorganization. In the capital improvement program, we are very pleased that you have a number of activities that will move the city forward. One that is going to be difficult in your discussions will be where do we go on the Sturgeon City Environmental Building, and we'll be spending more time discussing options on that. We're looking at the completion of the Lejeune Greenway and Trail, and we're very pleased to tell you that the contractor is now making significant progress on cutting out all of the path, so that from basically the bicycle bridge there on 24, all the way back down to the Memorial Gardens, that project should be finished within the next several months. We're looking at a welcome center at Jacksonville Landing, redevelopment to begin at Jackson, at the Northeast Creek Park. That's going to be a redevelopment effort over at least three years, and you're looking at expending well in excess of a million dollars to improve that park. Continued redevelopment of the downtown area, the city's annual paving program, sidewalk program, and of course, the regional lift station, which is one we call Parkwood. We have a lot of challenges, but the good news is that we are able to face those challenges at least for one more year on a very sound financial basis. We have talked about the budget schedule. Tonight, we'd like to give the overview, revenue forecast, the organization of the budget, talk very briefly about department issues, and then show you the number of proposed personnel for the coming year. If we have time this evening, and you feel comfortable beginning this, we would actually begin to go through some of the department budgets, such as the mayor and council. That will probably take at least an hour in itself, and then in the session of elections, obviously, that will balance the timesheet, because we don't have an election next year, so we don't have to budget money for it. But we do hope to go through some of these budgets tonight. April 12th and 19th will continue with finance, development services, public safety, recreation, and so forth. And then on the 19th, we'll really focus on those things having to do with your utility services. Again, potential adoption on the 3rd, or we can have additional workshops and adoption as needed. When it comes to the revenue forecast, this is an area that Gail does not let me add in public, nor does she let me talk about revenue in public. So I'm going to turn this over to the finance director, who will give you a quick overview of where we think our revenues are for the coming year. Gail?
As you can see, these are just the major sources of revenue to fund our operations. Property tax, we budgeted 22.8 in '16, we're budgeting 23.2 in '17, and that's based on figures we got from the property tax office from the county. Sales tax, we're projecting a small increase. The solid waste fees, we're looking at a very small increase there due to adding more customers. There's no increase in the fee. And the transfer in there from the general fund still offsets the expenses. Stormwater fees, we're looking at a very small increase, and water and sewer fees, we're not looking at any kind of increase in the revenue there.
Now, the actual details, if you want more details, it's shown on page 10 of your budget document. Please.
And then this just gives you the total for each fund. The general fund actually is down a little bit in total budget for FY '17. The same with the water sewer fund. Stormwater is down just a little bit, and solid waste is up just a little bit in total.
You can. You're doing a great job, so keep rolling.
Our tax rate in FY '16 was 64.2 cents, and that is going to remain unchanged. We have four cents that we set aside for council initiatives. The Center for Public Safety, we raised that last year to the $5.05, 5.15 cents, that it takes to cover the debt service. So that leaves 55 cents to run the general government operations.
In department issues, we have agreed over the last six budgets that we've worked together on, that there's certain things that will be put into the budget, certain things will come to you. The departments are required to present a base budget, and areas where they want any significant increases, they have to justify them. They don't automatically go into the base budget. This year, we had 12 requests. If you think back on other years, there have been years when we've had two dozen, three dozen requests. The city budget and the city department heads recognize that we are into an area where we're going to have to do as much as possible with our current revenues. I'm very pleased to tell you that of the requests turned in this year, there were only 12. That speaks to what I call the honest budgeting that your department head submit. Two of those have been placed in the operating budget, and they were incidental things. Let me give you an example. In metering, they wanted to have a new, basically handheld meter reader that they could take out in the field. They have two, they wanted to have a backup, so that when one of the two that they use on a daily basis malfunctions, that they would have this there so they could stay on schedule for reading. A relatively inexpensive, that was put in the budget. There are eight that were requested that are not recommended. Those include additional personnel in a number of areas, and as you go through those department budgets, you will be able to either confirm or reverse the recommendation of the manager. You will certainly never hurt my feelings by reversing those decisions, but in reversing those, you will have to find the revenues, or realize that the fund balance will have to come up with the revenues to address those additional needs. There are two that I would also like to recommend to you, and we will be discussing those as we get to the individual departments. But altogether, 12 requests, two in the budget, two recommended, eight not recommended. Each year, we also organize the city budget with specific authorized positions. If you'll notice, FY '16, the current budget is 555 employees. The FY '17 has one additional employee. That additional employee is actually in the police department, and that is the grant that you approve relative to, did they call it a psychological, Ron, do you remember what the title was? But it was a person to help in trauma situations. So there has been a little bit of shifting in some of the individual department budgets, and you will see those later, but total budgets requested at this time will be 556 for the year.
Did they fill that position yet? It was counselor.
Counselor, that was the title.
Civilian police crisis counselor.
Yes.
Civilian police crisis counselor.
Yes, and they did fill that person. Expenditures, as Gail has said, are basically the same as last year. In some areas, a little lower. If you'll notice in water sewer, the primary reason why that's down about $4 million is because of capital projects or ongoing maintenance projects that didn't qualify as capital projects. But you can see across the board, it is generally the same budget as you had this past year. On capital improvements, though, it did go up significantly, and that is because you have the very large water and sewer, or rather sewer, project, which is the Parkwood Lift Station. What are our budget assumptions? No tax increase, no sales tax, distribution change, the tax rate would stay where it is at 64.2. The water and sewer rates will stay where they are. Solid waste fees, no change. Stormwater fees, no change. General fund balance, roughly $1.6 million. You'll recall over the years that we balance our budget using our savings account. Traditionally, we have used as high as three or four million. Last year, I believe, we used about 2.2 million. With charges that you have assisted in residential collection over the years, we've been able to work to reduce the use of fund balance. The budget as presented to you tonight would use a little over 1.6 million of your fund balance. You will also recall that as you look at your audited numbers each year, that we are usually able to keep from spending all of the fund balance that we had projected. That's because of underspending in some of the budgeted items. Another budget assumption that we have is health insurance. We've been very fortunate that the last premium increase that was passed on to city employees was 2010. That's six budgets ago. What we know is that two years ago, we needed a premium increase, but we also know that during the good years of three and four and five years ago, we were able to build a reserve. Rather than pass on those premium increases to the employees, what we did was to go into that fund balance, which was the health insurance fund balance, and we picked up the void by spending our savings account. We've done that for the last two years. So instead of passing on a 6% or 7% increase each of the last two years, we spent our savings account. That savings account now is down to the point where we cannot do that any longer. So we are looking at cost increases and plan changes. For every plan, the premium will go up $20 per employee, per pay period. 26 pay periods, that's $520. Did I get that math correct?
I told him before we met.
We thought so.
While that's a large increase, we would remind everybody that it has been many years since we passed that increase along. The other thing is the city's contribution to the health plan will also go up $100,000, because the city, as the employer, covers a lot of the cost for the employee. There's good news, though. You will recall that a year or so ago, we reorganized how we were handling our situations on workers' compensation. Because we are stressing wellness, we're stressing safety, we are doing a very good job of settling claims, managing those claims, our premiums for next year's worker's compensation will actually be reduced by a little over $100,000. So we're actually able, and fortunate we're able, to simply shift that $100,000 from the workers' comp account over to the health account. So that was good news. There are also going to be plan changes. For example, we know over the last several years that our efforts to try to get people to use generic drugs has not been as successful as it should be. We also know our efforts to try to encourage employees not to use the emergency room unless it's truly an emergency, that those have not been as successful. So we're making plan changes that will incentivize and penalize. It's the carrot and the stick. So for example, the more you can use generic, the less we want that generic to cost. But when there is a generic, and you choose not to use the generic, then the cost to you is going to be greater. We're going to be providing educational material to the employees, possibly something as simple as a card, so that when you go to the doctor, you don't have to understand insurance, all you have to say is, you know, "Doctor, when you get ready to do the prescription, here's what my employer says." And let him read it. And what it's going to say is, "The city health plan says, if a generic drug is available, you must prescribe it." So we are really going to try to get better control of our health plan. Our overall expenses with health claims, as far as illnesses, did not go up this year. What went through the roof were our prescription drug charges. The use of generics, if you pardon the expression, tanked. The use of non-genetic drugs, which are in many cases extremely expensive, shot through the roof. Our health plan is also, as you look at one of the decision packages, is going to be talking about how we can do more coaching to encourage employees to live a wellness life, and how we can help employees understand the medical issues that they're facing. I mean, in the old days, you had a headache. Today, there could be 1,000 reasons for having a headache, and they're all expensive. So we need some professional assistance, and that's one of the decision packages we'll be talking with you about. Fuel, while we all are pleased every time we go to the pump that it's not costing us $2, we're in the budget, we're keeping these budget numbers at the same level we've had for the last two years. We've discussed this with you before, we hope that that will build a reserve at the end, but what we do know is this, there will come a time, this year, next year, the following budget, when the prices are going to go back up. And rather than be in the valley and enjoy the sunshine, we need to realize that the mountain's going to come back, and we need to have that reserve there, so that when gas and diesel are back up over $3 or $4, we don't have to suddenly find twice as much money. We have planned for that rainy day.
May I ask you a quick question before we move to the next item? Based on those prices there, what is our annual fuel cost?
We're fortunate we have the expert in the house tonight to answer that question. Ed, would you come up to join the mayor next to him? You look very good sitting as the mayor pro temp tonight.
Right now, for unleaded, the average, we're spending just below $2 a gallon. That's what our average. We use about 14,000 gallons a month. So we're probably 200 and, I don't have it, somewhere around $200,000 a year.
300.
300.
See, Gail doesn't let Ed or me do math in public.
I need a pencil and a computer.
At that price?
No, at the price we're currently paying, but what's budgeted is significantly more than that, and so that money will just, it won't be used, it'll just roll back into the general fund or back into the fund balance.
I'm just curious what the differential is between the $1.
Yeah. Between what we're budgeting versus what we're actually paying is somewhere around a dollar twenty, a dollar thirty, depending on how much we're paying.
That's fourteen thousand gallons times twelve.
Fourteen thousand plus fifteen.
Hundred fifty-six. Fifty-six thousand.
Come on, Randy.
Twelve by twelve is like forty-four.
Yeah, about a fifty-six thousand, so.
Hundred, hundred, three, hundred seventy-five thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Mister Massey has me.
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-one, two, two hundred.
And right, and right now, the unleaded and diesel is really close together. Used to be a twenty cent gap between the two, but now the cost is within a couple cents of each other.
What happened when diesel was cheaper? I remember when everybody wanted to get diesel because it was cheaper than gas. Now, now look at it.
Sulfur, they, they lowered the sulfur standard in diesel gasoline, which then added, increased the cost.
The other thing I would remind you while we're talking about fuel, you authorized us to, to buy a new container, ten thousand gallon container. That has significantly changed our transport cost. We now have it operational, we sent a picture to you with landscaping around it the other day. And Ed, do you want to make any comments about how this benefited us?
Yes, sir. What we used to have to do before is, with only a five gallon diesel tank, we had to watch it and we'd have to order fuel every three or four days. But it, one depended on the other. To take a tanker load, it's eight thousand gallons. We knew we needed diesel, but did we need enough unleaded to take up that whole eight thousand gallons? Now, the way we do it is, we just call, they send eight thousand gallons of unleaded, and the second truck rolls in right behind it with eight thousand gallons of diesel. We order fuel every two weeks, and it's, and that, what it allows us, especially water supply lines maintenance, they, they fill up their tanks for all the emergency generators now, at, at our facility, which doesn't cause me a headache before, if they would do that and they would use an extra three or four hundred gallons in one day, that would really put us in the bind. But with that bigger tank, it has worked out really well.
Are we, and we're saving money of buying in a bulk?
Oh, yes, sir. And, and the two departments that I just mentioned, they were paying thirty dollar drop fee. So not only did they have to pay for the fuel, but thirty dollars times.
Per site.
Per site, times whatever, ten, twenty sites that they're filling that particular day. So for the city, it's a significant savings with that larger tank.
I believe that we calculated that within a two-year period, you would pay for the cost of the tank just in the savings.
Yes, sir. And then it, if we did run short, we always had to buy a short load from, we usually use great gas, but you're paying pump prices instead of a cheaper price. We'd have to do that every four or five months when we, we couldn't take enough unleaded to match it, so.
So we won't have to do that?
Never, we will never have to do that again, so it works out really well.
That's it, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like it. Yes, sir.
Also, the budget assumption, as we said before, we are adding one on the full-time basis. You'll also notice that we've reduced two on the part-time basis. One of the things that we're going to be studying as part of the three E's this year is temporary employees. We are very fortunate that you allow us to have a significant number of seasonal employees, and we're very fortunate we're able to hire those through temp agencies. In hiring them through the temp agency, it relieves the city of a lot of liability and a lot of process. At the same time, we pay a premium anywhere from thirty-one percent to thirty-five percent for each dollar in wages that are paid. So for example, if a person is paid ten dollars an hour to work with Michael on the park crews in mowing, we're actually paying that agency thirteen dollars and ten cents to thirteen dollars and fifty cents. That's still a good deal for the city. But it's surprising to realize that our total accounts with those agencies is over six hundred thousand dollars. Now, we believe that by going in and negotiating with the two agencies we use, that we should be able to get a better rate. It doesn't mean they're going to agree. It is certainly true, the whole time we have the temporary employee, that that agency has responsibilities. But on the other hand, if you have an employee who comes to work in the mowing crews in April, and that person stays with you all the way through September, should you actually pay that thirty-five percent surcharge every hour, every day, every week, every pay period? So one of the things that, once we get the bond issues and the budget pretty much behind us, we're pledging to you that we're going to meet with these agencies. We're going to see if we can negotiate a better rate so that we can determine, are we actually getting as good a bargain as we can with that buying power? The budget book itself is organized in the same fashion that we have organized each year. I will use, if you will turn to any of the budget pages, well, why don't we turn to the mayor and council's budget that begins on page twenty-four. On page twenty-three, rather, you will see the mission of the mayor and council. On the next page, you will see the revenue and expenditure summaries. On the next page, you will see comments and staffing. This gives you and the citizens the opportunity in one place to see major things having to do with that department. Now, it's certainly true that in addition to what you see in these simplified line items, there is a very thick, almost, what, thousand-page book that actually shows every component of every line item. We're pleased to tell you that Mr. Thomas has accepted the responsibility that the council asked him to do several years ago to review each of those items for you.
But I have a complaint. Because I ask, I always ask Gail to reduce the budget. So the last time she gave me one, I think it was like six-point, like the, you know.
Careful what you ask for.
You didn't define reduce, though. But in addition to what you see here, we want you to understand, and you're welcome to have the opportunity to have your own personalized copy, that will actually show you every line item, every subscription, every breathing apparatus, every patrol car, anything that we're spending money on, there is detailed backup that is available to you. And if you're interested in it, we'll be happy to, to print one of those documents for you, also available for the public.
Just out of curiosity, refresh my memory, why we jumped in that actual fifteen for the insurance contracts and all? Why did it go up so significantly?
Actually, in your budget? Okay. I tell you, in one second, let's, we'll get right to the budgets if you would like to begin to, to discuss some of them. So I know that Ms. Washington has another engagement. What we would like to do, if you don't mind, in the next forty-five minutes, is begin to go through some of those. Is that acceptable to you? Okay. Well, let's look at the mayor and council's budget. It begins on page twenty-three, and twenty-four is the detail. First of all, the overhead allocation. I would remind council that while you sit as the mayor and council of the city, you also sit as the board of directors of several of the enterprise funds, actually, any enterprise fund we have. So you're the board of directors for the water and sewer fund, the board of directors for the stormwater fund, the board of directors for commercial garbage and residential garbage, all of the funds you adopt the budgets for. Because of that, it's appropriate for your budget and the budgets of many other departments to have cost sharing throughout those funds. For example, this year on water and sewer, we project that you will be spending about eleven percent of your time on water and sewer issues. I'm sorry, that's the, that's the change. We are projecting that you will be spending a portion of your time on water and sewer. So out of your total budget of roughly four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, you're going to be collecting roughly, what would that be, eighteen percent, Mr. Thomas? Something like that, from the water and sewer fund. We'll say eighteen percent for simple.
That's close.
We won't, we won't ask for NC State math, we'll use Clemson math. And you can see the same thing, solid waste, we feel like, fortunately, knock on wood, you're going to be spending very little time on solid waste this year. So out of your four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar budget, solid waste is only paying thirty-three thousand. Same thing with stormwater. When you get in your operating expenses, the, there is an increase that's nominal in insurance, contracts, training, fleet charges, and supplies. That is because of travel expenses. We have looked at travel expenses, we've asked y'all to turn in the projected trips that you'll be taking. So roughly, we've increased that by about two thousand dollars, an incidental expense. On the other hand, when it comes to utility maintenance, professional services, IT, media charges, you'll notice that that has gone down just a little bit. And it's primarily due to the allocation that is in the intelligent or in the ITS department. Mayor, you asked for a specific question, what was that?
Yeah, I was just looking at this, thirty-five thousand dollar increase, almost thirty, thirty-three thousand dollar increase here between actually FY-15 and adopted FY-16 on that item two there. And you say that was from the travel?
No.
Line number two in the expenditure.
You're talking about the, you're talking about the actual.
An insurance problem, or?
Yeah, you're talking about the difference between the actual two thousand fifteen and the adopted two thousand sixteen. What we'll do is go back and, as always, when y'all ask questions and we don't have the answers, if we can't make them up and make you believe them, then we'll do some research on them. So we will find out on that one.
I'm just curious that.
Anybody have a, a memory on why that went up two years ago? From fifteen to sixteen.
Some of it's travel. Don't know how much was attributed to any of the other, other items in that.
What about the fifty thousand dollars in the next slide, three?
That, that ends up being tied to allocation. In other words, every year when we allocate the ITS budget and the media budget, and what happened, I think, that, that year, that's when we started broadcasting all the boards and commissions meetings. And so what happened is, there was a, those get charged to the mayor and council's account, and therefore, that part of the media allocation increased in the mayor and the council's account.
I think at the same time, we were lost some that we were getting from the county providing that service.
Yes, yes.
Well, actually, Mr. Thomas, you are right. Because the county started broadcasting their own meetings, such as the meeting last evening, the contribution from the county went down. But we'll get you more detail on, on both of those. Barring anyone proposing a resolution tonight to move us from seven council members to a different number, we're assuming that your personnel number will remain at seven.
I'm curious, are we, are we counted in the fifty-five part-time employees that you showed us earlier?
Well, actually, I don't know the answer to that. Let me turn back a page and see.
Page twenty-five.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Okay.
I wanted if that was part of the fifty-five that you showed us earlier.
Well, if you'll turn to page nineteen of your budget book, we don't actually show.
Don't show us.
Y'all, so when it shows the, that must be an oversight on our part. But we don't show y'all as part of the full-time employees, nor seasonal, nor part-time. I would tell you that knowing the demands on your job, you should be in the full-time category. But to keep the budget at five fifty-six, we ask you not to make that adjustment.
We could just call ourselves like temp employees.
Yeah, on-call employees.
On-call employees. Elections, obviously, we have no expense for elections, but we would remind you that a year from now, when we sit and talk about budgets, we'll be once again looking at a thirty-eight to forty thousand dollar addition to your, to your budget in order to have the biannual elections. From a legal standpoint, once again, the attorney fills out a form each year that allocates his services to the various funds. You can see that the revenue is a little down from the general fund this year, but a little up in some of the other items. His overall budget, though, is down. And that is noted in budget notes on page thirty-three, that the outside attorney fees and utility maintenance and so forth has decreased, resulting in a reduction of about fifteen thousand dollars in his budget. I will also say to you, and I mean this in a very, very professional way, John is not just the city attorney, he is an advisor to the management. He is an advisor to every department. His advice is not just legal advice, it's what we call just professional advice. Whether we're talking about issues having to do with a potential lawsuit, UDO changes, bond issues, or whether we're simply talking about how we should organize the volunteer dinner where you're going to be recognizing tomorrow night your volunteer advisory boards, his counsel is critical. And I will also say to you, and I'm, I'm tooting his horn, and it should be, even after UNC lost last night, his trombone should be long and extended in that he is a valued, you get a lot of return for the one counselor that you hired. And I appreciate your professional assistance every day. With that, John's going to go through my budget for us. In the city manager's budget, we do the same thing on page thirty-six, we do the same thing with cost allocations. You will notice that, that the insurance and contracts have gone up a little bit, that utility maintenance and so forth have gone up, but all of those are going to be reflected through practically every department. You're going to see IT charges and media charges raising or lowering almost every budget. Now, it doesn't hit every budget the same. Why is that? The number of devices that you have assigned to your department determine the number of IT charges, let's say, or units that you get charged for. So if the police department adds more gadgets, but they don't add any more people, then you're going to see, as you will later today, or later in the process, that their budget went up over two hundred thousand dollars just on gadgets. And that didn't have anything to do with body cams. It just has to do with gadgets we put in that building. On the other hand, when we get iPads or when we get cell phones, those charges are directly reflected. So whatever you, as a department head, are requesting, that comes back to your budget. One of the things that we did this year as part of the three E's was to look at all the phones that we use. And we said, "Why does this person need that phone?" In many cases, a lot of our phones that are out there, the only reason why they need it is to dial numbers. It isn't about texting, it isn't about receiving emails, it's just, the lawnmower has broken down and Michael needs to be called, so they need to be able to punch in those seven digits. They don't need expensive phones. So by studying that this year, we reduced the number of phones that had a lot of abilities and went back to the basic flip phone, and that has worked very well. That is an area, though, that we always have to watch on what we would call creep. Well, Joe got that phone, why can't I have that phone? Or, "I saw this on TV, why can't I now have the one that's on TV?" So that is constantly something that we try to monitor. The number of personnel in the city manager's budget stays constant. We are very pleased to tell you that we now have a new full-time receptionist. She is charged to our, the manager's budget, Yolanda, who has been a part-time employee with us on and off for the last year, competed successfully, and she is now the receptionist, so that when you see her in the atrium, the foyer, she is now with us on a full-time basis.
Happy to hear that.
Very, very nice young lady. Any.
I had a question. Back on number thirty-six for expenditures, where under capital improvement projects with the Frida Fountain, are we still accepting pledges for that?
Yes, ma'am, we certainly are. And we are, we are very pleased to tell you that almost every month, we sell about a thousand dollars worth of bricks. And so.
So will they be installed at a specific? So will they be installed at a specific time?
No, they're, they're actually installed when the person orders them. It takes about a month to get them in, then we contact that person and we have a little ceremony out there. We actually go out to the fountain with the person. They identify where they would like the brick to be placed. Some people may connect, may be more connected with one military service than the other. Some want to be closer to the medallions or closer to the fountains. We let the person who's buying the brick identify where they want it, and then we hold a little ceremony and install them. So almost once a month, we have a little ceremony out there installing those.
Okay.
And we certainly are pleased that the fountain is being used so well. On passports, we are always, this is our second year of being in the passport application business. Now, I want the public to understand, we do not issue passports. We are the application agency. That means you can call City Hall and set up an appointment, or you can come into City Hall or come into the Center for Public Safety five days a week and get an application processed. There is a charge for that. The federal government sets the charge that the city can apply. That's $25. Additionally, we charge for the taking of pictures, the passport pictures. For good pictures, the charge is $8. For just regular pictures, the charge is still $8. But we do that, you will remember that when we finished the audit of the first year, we actually had revenue of over $80,000. We project that's going to continue. But because it is a revenue source that we have very little control over, it's basically walk-in traffic, we are budgeting conservatively here. So you can see, we're only projecting about $63,000 in revenue. The expenditures are only $4,000, roughly $4,000. Because remember, the way that we cover the service is through existing employees. We did not hire a single new employee to do this. And last year, we processed, I believe it was close to 3,000 applications using the 11 agents that we have. So again, now, Gail, you can explain why the negative number of 59,000, that's because you're transferring money out?
Yeah, that's the excess of the revenue over the expenditures.
And all of that goes into the general fund?
That's correct.
Okay. Good. And of course, staffing is actually shown as zero. Transportation planning. Ron, can you help us? Anthony is out of town on city business tonight, so can you walk us through some of these things on transportation planning?
The first area is the MPO's budget, in essence, and any of the support that the MPO provides to the city. Like, for example, in there, one of the revenue sources is traffic impact analysis fees. And that's just a planning number, but that's when a development has to conduct a TIA. They basically give them the opportunity to get the contract from the city and reimburse the city the cost of that. So, but the, most of their workload is determined by the MPO and the MPO's approved work plan, the tax-approved work plan. And you can see that we, of course, the city contributes some funding, funding from the general fund, that's in the first line item, it's $124,000. That's part of the match for all the federal funding. The county contributes to that match, 15-5. We have a number of grants. The 104 grant is the actual Federal Highway Administration Transportation Planning Grant. The 5303 is an FTA planning grant.
Federal Transit?
Federal Transit Administration. And in actuality, one of those is 5307 and one of them is 5303, I think. But anyhow, there's, there's two FTA grants in there that provide funding.
I think one of them is the state part of the grant.
Okay. You're right. You're correct.
Now, one of the things that we would point out, why is the county match so much lower than the city match? It's because the MPO does not cover the entire county. The MPO covers all of the city and basically the urbanized area of the county. Is that the way to say it?
That's correct. And some of the, the city's contribution includes match, the required match for the FTA funding, which the county doesn't, doesn't contribute to. So it's a combination of why we're, we're matching. But if we, if we really get into some, some studies, for example, are primarily in the county, we go talk to the county about increasing their contribution, you know, because it's really an 80-20 match for that transportation plumbing, planning money, 80% federal and 20% local. And the salaries and benefits, you know, no significant increase. Some equipment purchase that we've got budgeted in there.
And then, when you look at the traffic signals, which are all part of this...
Yeah. And the, and the traffic signals, we have general fund funding and we have NC DOT Schedule C and Schedule D funding. And that's because we maintain, we do annual maintenance on the DOT signals. And the Schedule D pertains to the actual transportation, traffic management. That's the salary that, that pays, that's the money that pays Rob's salary that helps us time the signals and keep the traffic flowing at the optimum levels.
Now, if you'll, if you'll look on the screen and also look in your book at page 48, you'll notice taxes and other general fund revenue. And FY '16 amended, it was 501,000, and the proposed budget is 672,000. If you were, if you're looking at the paper book or the overall budget, look at the adopted FY '16, 288,000. So the first question that comes up is, why has this line item in traffic signal control gone from 288,000, 501,000, 672,000? The answer is, we've transferred where we pay for our streetlights, not traffic lights, streetlights, and who is responsible for getting those streetlights repaired and inventoried. For a long time, it was in Johnny's area in the streets department. That is now, now that we are into traffic signals, it became logical for our people to also work with the utility companies on streetlights. So the real thing is to look at FY '16, 288,000. You basically added $400,000 to this budget, but you will see in the streets budget, a reduction of $400,000 because we're simply moving the responsibility for managing streetlights to a different department. Just recently, Ms. Washington had a number of lights that kept going on and off on commerce. And we were able to work with Jones Onslow, was that, Ms. Washington, was that Jones Onslow? To get those working. We also know that in both Duke Power and Jones Onslow are changing their technology over to the LEDs. And with that, we are seeing some savings in our streetlight accounts. But we want to remind you and the public, over a penny of your tax bill, of your tax rate, goes to streetlights. And I will say to you, we're not that well-lit a city. I mean, we don't have lights all up and down Western Boulevard and a lot of these other places that some of the, some of the more urbanized areas have. But you're still spending over $400,000 a year on streetlights.
And one of the things that we have done, and it says there in the note on page number 49, about our expertise, we're developing our ability to splice fiber optic cable. So what that does is, that, of course, helps us with the, with the connectivity for the signal system, but it also helps us with our own network connectivity with the city. And just within the past month, for example, there was a cut on the fiber that's at Piney Green. The cut was made by the contractor working on the project. It's his cable that he's responsible for. But because we have the ability to do that, they basically hired us to patch their cable damage. We also had a cut on a, on a fiber that we run from the tower at the Commons to the water plant. And, and our people were able to go and, and patch that. And when we've hired commercially, it usually costs around $5,000 bucks to repair one of those fiber cuts. So that's, that in the future, that's going to be a way to earn some revenue to offset some of the expense for having, you know, the signal staff and their equipment to do things like that.
And then, of course, transit. We do put in about $400,000 this coming year for transit. That is the general fund's contribution. You can see that the fares have stayed stable. It has been some time since we raised the rate. Ridership has gone from about $90,000 in 2012 to 110,000 in 2015. Obviously, we have not seen the ridership count for this year because we're still in 2016.
We, we expect it to continue to rise. We're still working on adding a fourth route, which should also, you know, add to our ridership because it'll serve an area of the city that currently doesn't have a bus transportation, and that's down in the Georgetown area and out to the Walmart on the south end of town. One of the things that was approved in, in the consent budget tonight, or the consent agenda, was DOT has now, with the, the implementation of the STI, they have now implemented procedures for DOT to start providing match for replacement buses. So one of the agenda items in the consent was for council to approve a supplying for that type of funding. So if, in fact, we're successful, whenever we budgeted replacement buses, up to 10% of the cost of that replacement bus will be provided by DOT instead of right now where we're budgeting it from the general fund. So we continue to manage that and, and of course, our, our total contribution each year is tied to whatever Congress appropriates in the funding from the FTA. And that's tied to ridership, too. So it's a, it's a thing that continually is adjusted based on the formulas.
Talk about the increase in grants from roughly a million to 1.9 million for the coming year, please.
We're, we're actually, we have the opportunity sometimes to receive additional funding from the state that they, they get to manage. And so depending on a project, like it's primarily a capital project, we will then basically try to obtain some of the funding from the, from the state. But, Richard, which line are you looking at specifically?
Well, talk about transit comment number three on page 54.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, see there, what, what Anthony's referring to is that, that there are funds, like, for example, that, that state controls that are federal funds that haven't been utilized. And, and what you can do is, is they have a timeline on spending those federal funds, and at a certain point, they'll make them available to authorized projects in other transit systems. So we will try and, one, use all of our unused funding and, and that we may have in our grants, and then apply for some of that unused funding that the state is managing. And that's what we, we hope to be able to do, to be able to cover the cost of the park and ride. And that's, we talked before about using the local value of the land for the local match.
And you recall, in the tour of a couple of weeks ago, we went up by the Commons and there, across from Lake Bittner, between Lake Bittner and the ball fields, there's that wooded area. And that's where we're proposing to build a new parking lot that would be a park and ride lot. And as Ron said, the, that will be covered by the price, the value of the land will be the city's match, and the federal authorities, transit authorities, will be paying for that development. That will be something that we will be bringing you some designs to see probably late summer because we hope to get that under contract or out for bid sometime during the coming fiscal year.
Maybe, maybe a little, yeah, maybe a little later than summer.
So summer may include October and November, is that what you're saying, Ron?
Yeah. We may have a late summer this year.
A little warming in.
It could be. It could be. On community programs, you will, you will notice that the, the taxes and general fund have gone down. And why is that? Later in the budget, you are going to see a new division that we have talked with you about, and that is the Office of Livable Neighborhoods. So what's happened in community programs is, historically, this had two employees in it. Now, this has one employee in it, and the other employee is over in the new division of livable neighborhoods. So you will see across the board some reductions in their overall cost. This is the area, though, where we have, you know, the, the work that Glenn and a lot of his folks do, even though his folks are in their own media budget. And you can see the reduction on staff from two to one. Tourism, while you're not the TDA, you are required to adopt a budget because we actually manage the funds for TDA. On page 60, you'll notice that the occupancy tax, we're still projecting to be about 900,000. We don't see that growing. You will also notice that there is an administrative, administration charge. Now, by law, the city can collect an administrative charge, but that's all that can come to the city government. John, can you or Gail talk about what's the percent or how you figure that administrative charge?
It's right at $19,000 that the city budgets to receive from that. It's a higher percentage for the first 500,000 and then a lower percentage, I can't remember off the top of my head what the percentages are. But the rest of that is for things like the audit and the insurance, yeah, insurance and bonds for the board and...
And then you'll notice that the operating expenses are broken into tourism promotion and other tourism-led expenses. Reminds you that the state law identifies a, basically, two-thirds, one-third split, saying that two-thirds of the money has to go to promotions or marketing, and one-third has to go, or can go, doesn't have to go, but can go to capital projects, physical On human resources, page 64, you will notice that the, the budget is generally flat. There are some minor increases relative to video and professional services and utilities and so forth. There is a department issue that we're going to be talking with you about, not tonight, but at the end of the budget, and that is the wellness program that they would like to add, about $42,000 to hire a, not as a city employee, but a new contract with, with Blue Cross Blue Shield for a coaching program. And we'll be discussing the pros and cons of that with you at a later date. Overall, though, this department budget, as you see, is, is almost the same as last year. Personnel are still the same. The city clerk's budget... The city clerk's budget, we're very proud of the fact that Carmen was recognized yesterday by her peers. The mayor and Mr. Warden and Mr. Bittner were able to come. The rest of you had conflicts, but we had a nice tree planting ceremony out behind City Hall where her fellow clerks recognized her as the clerk of the year. And I believe that was some type of plum tree. Do you remember the actual name?
Yeah, Crimson Point Plum.
Crimson Point Plum.
Is that right, Michael?
Well...
He's left. Okay. Crimson Point Plum.
That tree was originally grown in Alabama by apparently Crimson Tide fans, and that's why it's called the Crimson Plum. Okay. Makes for a good story.
Yes.
One of the things in Carmen's budget, though, that we did include under note number two, increased by $10,000 for office assistants to help with the new record management project in the department. Will you spend a moment talking about that records management program?
Well, we've been wanting to work on a citywide records management policy for some time with an emphasis on electronic records. We are going to be having a Laserfish upgrade soon, which will help us with disposition of records that are no longer needed, electronic records to free up storage. But employees need guidance on how to dispose of records and how to manage their records. So it's something we wanted to try to put together to help manage all kinds of records, but mainly electronic records, which includes emails and videos and texts and social media and just about anything you do on computers and phones and iPads and all these type things. So this would be some help for us to try to accomplish that this year.
The other thing we need to do on our records management is eliminate. I sent out an email today to the mayor and council relative to the issue we're dealing with, with the repayment to the DOT regarding the traffic signal system. That went to the seven of you. It had copies to three or four other people. So right now, unless you deleted it, there are 10 emails being stored in the city system. And actually, there's an 11th. Because if all 10 of us delete it, it's still stored somewhere. And guess what? That thing is going to stay stored for a long time, not because the law requires it, but because no one is going into our systems and saying, delete that because it's past the required keep date. The more stuff we store, the more expensive IT becomes. And part of this goal is to go into our systems and truly look at the paper documents we have, but more important from a finance standpoint, all of the electronic things that we are keeping that we have no need to keep.
I would certainly like to know what we're required as far as electronic storage is concerned with our emails. I mean, I have emails that are going back all the way to 2005. Do I have an obligation to keep them because they are public record? I don't know.
Well, what we will do, one of the things that we plan to do is to bring you a workshop to show you and then all of the city employees what you're required to keep, how long you're required to keep it, how you go about the process of eliminating it. So we will give you that information. But, Mayor, I'm no different than you. I can show you emails that go back to the first day that I was here. And that email from Mr. Thomas that said, "I want budget details," I still have that one.
I'll resend it for you.
At the college, we get little notifications from our IT people to lighten up our boxes a little bit, you know, because we get so many emails stored in them, you know, and I guess that just takes up so much room on the server and everything. So I've never seen one from our IT department.
That's the reason why we need to start managing. Mayor and council, in honor of Ms. Washington, the fact she's going to have to leave for another obligation, this comes to a point where we could stop for the evening and pick back up in a week. On the other hand, if the other four of you want to wade through the entire budget tonight, we're welcome to stay here until 10 o'clock. But that's up to you. If you'd like to adjourn for the evening, this is a good breaking point. If you'd like to cover one or two more, that's up to you.
Motion to adjourn. Is that what you're saying?
That's up to you.
I've been here for an hour and 11 minutes. I mean, I'll leave it up to the rest of the council.
Ms. Washington, do you have a preference? Do you mind if they cover a few more budgets tonight or...
Oh, yeah, because I can go back in and watch it.
Okay. And if that's acceptable to you, we'll merge on. Forge on, not merge on, forge on. Finance Department. Once again, overhead allocations are shown on page 72. You will notice the $19,000 that they recover from tourism fees. You will also notice $4,000 for business licenses. Now, you might say, "I thought we did away with privilege licenses, so why do we have business licenses?" So the answer is, Gail?
There are a few that didn't get repealed. There's a beer and wine license that we still collect, very minimal, but we still do get one or two that we classify as business licenses.
Yes.
Yeah, the club pays all 30 bucks. The National Country Club, I saw that.
And we appreciate that donation each year.
Of course, we pay the state ABC board about $2,200 for our license.
Now, does that help the golfers with their games?
Well, yes, in the telling afterwards, yes, it does.
So it may be worth the $2,200 you pay the state.
Okay. So how do we get money for credit reports?
We charge the new customers a minimal fee. I don't remember what it is, but...
That's if they don't want, they'd rather have a credit report rather than...
Pay the deposit.
Yes. So it's their choice, you know, pay your deposit or pay us to get your credit check.
It's $3.50.
But then we have to pay that to somebody else to get...
Well, yes, we pay the company.
Can we get a credit report for $3.50?
You can get one for free, right? At Credit Karma or somebody.
So are we going to implement that process?
No, you can get your own. I cannot get yours.
I assume we're at least breaking even on that.
I would assume so, yes.
Well, just remember, assuming can get us both in trouble.
I can check to be sure.
I was wondering there.
We will check on that and see. When you look at the number of employees that are in this area, this includes all of your building folks downstairs in the utility area. It also includes all of the upstairs staff in finance. We talked about the credit, but let's look at credit at budget note number five on page 73. We have done a very good job of marketing electronic payments. Electronic payments are not free. Now, over the counter is not free. So you have to balance, how many employees do you actually need to take people who are walking through the door versus what are you willing to pay for electronic fees? You will notice in FY '15, the city processed a total of 87,606 credit card transactions, totaling over $9 million. In FY '16, the city processed an estimated $93,000, a total of almost 9.9 million. But there are fees that we pay for those credit card charges. We do not recover that fee by any type of a surcharge on the bill. So while it does cost us, there is a savings in that if all 16,000 or 17,000 housing accounts walk through the door every month, or we had to collect it some other way than electronically, we would need a lot more personnel. So there is always that balance. But we just want to remind people that when you pay by credit card, it's a great way to pay. We want to encourage that. The city does pay a fee for that collection service.
Where's the expenditure for fees on that, Gail?
Probably under number two, contracts.
I think it's number three.
Number three, professional services, do you think?
I believe that's where it is.
We'll verify that for you.
And I'd be just curious to know what is, what are processing fees total?
Just one total.
Well, it's a straight percentage of sales, right?
No, it depends upon the card.
There's a combination of methods that they charge through. Every one of them is a little different.
But bank draft is no, that doesn't cost us anything, right? If you do a direct bank draft?
That's correct.
That's neutral. That's the best.
Of course, this is covered completely by your water and sewer revenues because this is how we bill water and sewer customers. We continue to have efficiencies in this area. We have five persons who work directly under Sabrina Adams, and they do, I think, an excellent job. Anytime a person is questioning in their bill, we go right back out and reread it. They're very timely in this. We did some studies two years ago about privatizing this. You'll remember that the private company could not even begin to touch how inexpensively our personnel were doing this. And I think that, again, that's credit to Gail and to Sabrina and to the five employees that are down there. The increase in non-capital equipment is due to that replacement of the desktop computer. That was the one we talked about earlier, where they had a decision package. They wanted to have a backup piece of equipment, and so that was added to their budget, and that was relatively inexpensive. Fleet maintenance is the last of the departments that's under the finance department. It is a fund that is based upon how many pieces of equipment and how many times does need to be repaired. You'll notice in the comments that there are 581 vehicles or pieces of equipment in the fleet. We have 11 personnel. We added one person when we expanded to residential, I'm sorry, expanded to commercial garbage. We've already talked about the fuel cost. The capital outlay expenditure is higher due to replacement of a 16-year-old brake lathe on the automotive side of the shop and a much-needed fuel system upgrade. Ed, if you would, come back up and talk about the fuel system upgrade that we have put in the budget.
Yes, sir. The current system we have is what's considered a vacuum-type system. All our fuel dispensers have individual vacuum pumps, and it's drawing the fuel from 250 yards away. That system was meant for a tank a lot closer. It's 14 years old now, so it's getting, there's a lot of maintenance going on. I've had one pump down for almost two weeks to try to get it back up again. I haven't had all four of them up very often. What we plan on doing is moving it to a pump-type system, submersible pumps at the tank, four of them, two on the unleaded, two on the diesel, and replacing the old digital type or the old mechanical dispensers with dual electronic dispensers. The software and all the key card reader, that's all going to remain the same, so mainly it's a hardware upgrade. The dispensers are going to be upgraded, the electric pumps. The biggest cost in all that is running electrical. There is no power at the tanks. So the power has to be run from the building through the island and then to the tanks to operate the new electric submersible pumps.
What's the total estimated cost of the system we're installing?
$64,000.
And Gail, are we funding that in one year or spreading it out over years?
We're financing that.
We're financing it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ed, anything else you want to point out in your budget?
No, sir, other than that big expense, that's the main part of our budget.
And I guess we're, did we ever come to a closure on deciding to put an auxiliary fueling station out on the other side of town so that everybody doesn't have to come back just to fuel or anything?
Well, we have not. That talks kind of, but this upgrade of our system is kind of leading us in that, right now, we have to do manual stick readings, we have to manually read the pump, go to the pumps and read it. With these new electronic ones, we will be able to do that all from the office, which will give us a good chance to set up how it's done. So if you want to put one on the other side of town, you can still control everything from one location. Right now, if it was another one on the side of town, somebody would have to physically go over there, do stick readings of all the tanks, do, write down the totalizer readings. If we can get this new system employed here and see how it works, then I think upgrading will be a lot easier. You can do everything from the office without manually going over there or physically going over there.
Ron, do you want to add something on that?
Yeah, well, I just want to say it's still a project, but it hasn't moved forward in the CIP, so it's sort of on hold at this point.
Yeah, there, we looked at the number of units that are on that side of town, and obviously Parks and Recreation is the primary unit and Station Four is the other primary unit. When we looked at the cost of installing that versus the number of vehicles that would be available, that sounds like the Villanova fight song that... Now, when we looked at that, we initially contacted a filling station, service station that's over on that side to set up a temporary account for fueling. That didn't work out because of the number of pieces of equipment we have that have trailers and the difficulty of getting in and out at that station. The other thing that we're currently studying in Michael's department is converting our mowers, which requires, you know, a lot of gas every day, to natural gas. So it's not something we're going to give up on, but I think right now, the best thing for us to do is just continue to monitor, when will it become economically advantageous for us to do that? Now, police cars are all over town, and anytime they are on the western area, and they have to come all the way back to the main garage, that certainly is downtime for them. That is still in the CIP run?
It's still a project, but it's, we have it further back in the CIP.
If you'll notice under fees, this is where we account for the $150,000 that the TDA gives relative to the debt service on the Sturgeon City money. You'll also notice the $75,000 bond donation from the Sturgeon City Board of Directors. This is where it is accounted in your system. If you'll notice under expenditures, there are salaries with a negative number behind them. In your department budgets, we assume that every employee, every position that you've approved, that every employee is going to work 2,080 hours or whatever their full work year is. The reality is, that doesn't happen in every department. While in a department such as the attorney, it does happen. But in police, with a turnover rate that they have, or in public works, because you have turnover, you have salary savings. This is where that salary savings is theoretically, and from an accounting standpoint, pulled back out and therefore the negative number. And you can see that over the years, we've budgeted somewhere around $350,000 to $380,000 of negative salaries, recapturing those. And this is just the general fund departments. This is not water and sewer or anything stormwater. These are just the general fund numbers. Gail, you want to cover any of these other items in non-departmental?
I think so.
Capital reserve, what is that?
That's the, primarily the 4 cent money going out to spend on projects or to pay debts or... service.
Some of that in this line up the... The revenue, if there's debt service revenue in there.
Well, no, because the revenue actually comes from general fund into the capital reserve.
Now, one item that is also here, if you'll notice in the budget notes, is the eight-hundred megahertz system. And this is one of those heads-up, the train's coming moments. When the county established the bond issue, and I believe it was around thirteen or fourteen million dollars for the system.
Total.
Total.
Yeah, that, our part of it was like about three million, left them about ten million.
The debt was set up where we're only paying interest for a while. There comes a point where you've got to start paying down the principal. And I apologize for not checking. We will check. There comes a point in the next several years where we're going to have to start paying principal and interest on that. So your payment is going to go up substantially on that eight-hundred megahertz system. And when that happens, our number is going to go up. Did you have a chance to check today to see?
I did not.
Okay. We'll get you more information on the eight-hundred megahertz system, what we're currently paying on interest, and when we're going to have to start paying principal and interest.
Number two on sixty-eight-six, it's physical, you're twenties when you say the principal.
Okay, thank you.
Why is it that non-departmental? Police, right?
Public safety, police and fire.
Okay. Why don't you account for it?
Just because.
Excuse me?
Seemed like a good idea at the time.
Okay.
We don't have any control over that. That was by the county, and we're just, we send them a check every year or monthly, however we have it set up.
Yes, we agreed that the payment would be tied to their financing, and the way they chose to finance it was, you know, pushing back.
But the county and the city will face a substantial increase in FY20 when we start testing.
That's interesting, you know, just pushing it out a little further. It's not going to hit us too bad. I mean, we're only talking three million, but if you're talking, is that correct, three million, is that a correct number?
Generally, is that the number?
And it's twenty million total?
About thirteen.
Thirteen, so ten million for their side. Okay.
Mayor, if it's acceptable, Mike Yanera asked if he could be here for his police budget, so if we feel uncomfortable, we'll close for the evening and pick back up next week?
Sounds good. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? More favor?